Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, November 13th, meeting of the Dover Area School Board. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Banco, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Delater.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie.
Here.
Mr. Rahouser.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. First on our agenda is our report from our student board representatives. I believe we have Gigi tonight.
For the elementary report, all schools had successful turnouts for their parent-teacher conferences this year. Schools experienced an increase in the number of conferences that were scheduled. Teachers and parents were able to have valuable conversations to assist our students. All elementary schools celebrated their staff and students with the Quarterly School-Wide Proud Reward as a part of our PBIS program. To recognize students for the first marking period, each building held a Soaring Eagle recognition luncheon or breakfast. Dover, Live, and North Salem hosted a Scholastic Book Fair this past week. Wagglestown held theirs in October. In the secondary report, the high school held over 1,400 parent-student conferences this year. Thank you to our parents and students for their support. The high school is in the planning stages for Alumni Day 2018. On Friday, December 21st, DHS will host alumni as they visit classes and meet with students. The morning will conclude with a luncheon with current DHS staff. The IS teachers met with over 300 during parent-teacher conferences. The IS held its annual Yes Day. The day was a huge success. The students enjoyed the sessions they attended. Over 300 IS students attended the Fall Dance. The theme was neon. Thirty-six IS students were recognized as soaring eagles and were invited to a pizza luncheon with the IS administration team and counselors. PBIS monthly reward was held. Teams organized various stations activities for the students. In the fine arts, all schools will hold their holiday concerts at the high school in December. Concert dates are available on the district calendar. The fall play will be held this weekend. Performances are at 7:00 PM on Friday and Saturday in the DHS auditorium. In athletics, the girls volleyball team qualified for state playoffs, making it to the quarterfinals. Congratulations on a great season. And winter sports will begin this week. Trialts begin at the end of the week.
Thank you. Any questions for Gigi? Okay, I just had a question for Mrs. Krum. I know we had some issues at the intermediate she had mentioned about the dance and the gridlock that pretty much occurred from the traffic afterwards. How are we planning to address that going forward?
Well, speaking with Tara, if you want to, they talked a little bit about the fact that the weather was a huge problem because it was raining so hard, like so hard. Normally, they let a ton of kids out to get their parents and then drive away, but because it rained so hard, they only let 10 kids out at a time. So that held them back. However, that being said, they've said this has always been a problem, and even with the high school, our concern about with the high school is if we held it there, the way the parking lot is, we'd be very concerned for the kids' safety because cars come in very fast there. So I'm assuming with better weather, it won't be as bad of an issue. Would you agree? Yeah.
Okay.
Theresa, would it have made more sense to have the rear doors as the entrance and exit, or would that have been more...
The rear doors wouldn't allow them to cover to protect the kids from the rain.
It was just raining so hard.
Typically, we have them down our entrance and then up intermediate avenues, so we can just send them down the sidewalk and up the sidewalk, so we can load like 25 to 30 cars at a time. And then typically, we can do a double row also coming in front of the IS, but the rain and visibility was so bad that we didn't do the double row, and we only... So we did block it up from the square all the way down past the township building, just because we couldn't get... We just... It was much safer for our kids to stay with us till we put them in the cars.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to our presentations and celebrations. I see a sea of Dover Elementary folks out here, so I'd like to hear about some APL strategies from Dover Elementary.
Just a reminder, whoever's speaking needs to speak into the microphone, okay? Because that will... Then we'll have it on video. There we go.
But your lips don't have to touch. Okay, so if we can start, Mr. Ruppin being here tonight, we did... Who videotaped Mr. Rup? Some of our media club kids, so he wanted to start our presentation.
Good evening. Over the last several months, you've heard a lot of talk about APL strategies and their uses in the classroom. Tonight, the Dover Elementary Student Council is going to share their experiences with the APL strategies, as well as some of the teachers and how they use it in their classroom.
In the following presentations, we will be showing how we use APL strategies, what an APL strategy is, and how it works.
How does the essential question help us? Well, that's what we are going to find out. We went around some classrooms, and this is what we found.
Yes, the essential question lets us know what our main lesson is about.
The yellow cards are the essential questions.
Here are some more examples in a video of teachers going through the essential questions.
Do benchmarks help us?
How can ecosystems thrive?
Our essential question for math today is how can we use fractions to solve problems?
Our essential question for the day is how can identifying the character's actions, behaviors, and responses to challenges help to determine the theme of the task?
We went around some grade levels, and these are some of the agendas.
How does an agenda help us in class? How we think the agenda helps us? We think the agenda helps us because it lets us know what to look forward to. A first grader said, "It helps me because it lets us know what we need to do and when we need to do it." A fourth grader said, "The agenda helps because it tells you what to do throughout a certain time period."
How the teachers think the agenda helps us. One teacher said, "I like the agenda because when the students get to the independent portion of the lesson, they can refer to the agenda to see what they need to do." This is also good because some students finish before others, so they can look at the agenda to see what they need to do next.
Checking for understanding and using the on-the-clock strategy. A part of the APL is checking for understanding and using the on-the-clock strategy.
What is the on-the-clock strategy? The on-the-clock strategy is when the teacher gives us a time to complete the task.
What is the repeated direction strategy? In fifth grade and sixth grade, we have to say the instructions of what the teacher just said and how much time we have to do it.
Here are some ways that we interact and use the on-the-clock strategy in Dover Elementary.
How do these strategies benefit our fellow peers? In our latest student council meeting, we mentioned how APL strategies affect students. A couple of the teachers mentioned that the interaction sequence gets the students on task and focused for the upcoming activity.
Our part of the presentation is bellringers and closers. The first one is the sixth-grade bellringer.
Go back. Thank you. The first one is actually a fifth-grade one.
Go back again, please. Next one is a fourth-grade one.
The bottom two on the left are third-grade bellringers.
And the last one is a first-grade bellringer.
Bellringers help us in school because it gives us something to do when we first get in class. It makes us focus, so we will not talk to other people and get behind.
Interviews with teachers about lesson enclosures.
What do you do at the end of the day for your closing?
At the very end of the day, we have a closing circle. We always share one thing that happened throughout the day. I have some cards that I pull that asks a question of the children, and then they answer the question. And sometimes, we give a chance to play a game.
This is Mrs. Ruppensberger.
Hi.
And we are interviewing all one teacher from each grade to get their closure. So tell us about your closure.
At the end of our lessons in kindergarten, a lot of times, we use turn and share. In reading, we can use it to turn and share about our different settings and characters that we had. We can also talk about the problems or the solutions. In math, we can use our closures to talk about the vertices and the size of shapes, or number ID, or even how we use ten frames.
Thank you, and I think that's all we need.
Thank you.
This is Mrs. Ruppensberger.
Hi.
And we are interviewing all one teacher from each grade to get their closure. So tell us about your closure.
At the end of our...
We talk about our day, and we talk about any of the kids' follow-up and any of our problems.
Perfect.
Is it it?
And we talk about any of the kids' follow-up and any of our problems.
Closers help us at Dover Elementary because at the end of our period, the teacher lets us summarize what we learned during the lesson, review what we have for homework. If we have an upcoming test, we have a test upcoming to study for. That helps us get focused and prepared. It also helps us get good grades.
These APL strategies are used to keep kids engaged, stay on topic, and collaborate with peers. Thank you for your time and attention, and have a great evening.
Very nice job, students. Thank you for doing that tonight. Do our board members have any questions about that presentation? Thank you. Let's give them all another round of applause. Now, I know you're all just as excited for a presentation of our annual financial audit, so if our friends from Boyer and Ritter would like to come up to the microphones, we'd appreciate that.
It's under the list of celebrations.
That's right.
Maybe a presentation of board and a celebration for the business office that we've concluded our audit for another year. Thank you for allowing me to come present tonight. The conduct of the audit concluded in the last week and a half, and I'm here tonight to share the results with you and go over some of the information that we've shared with you. There should be... I think I distributed a copy of the audit to each of the board of directors and administrators. There's two documents there. One is the main financial audit, and there's secondly a letter. Very briefly, I want to talk about the four areas that we look at in the audit and the results of those, the first of which is the full financial audit, the big document that's of interest to your taxpayers, which is also required by the Department of Education, the federal government, as well as your bondholders and your in the bond rating agencies as part of your bond issues. So Boyer and Ritter's job is to conduct an audit of your financial statements. It's an 80-page document right here. We come in, starting in the summer, evaluate all the internal controls of the organization for how you collect cash and receipts, as well as how you spend your money. And then we look at how that information is processed, culminating in this document that you have here in front of you tonight. At that point, we turn around and we look at the conversions that are made to a full accrual basis of accounting that includes all of your debt and your capital assets, and we issue an opinion on your financial statements. So the first area we look at is, you know, hey, are these financial statements in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles? Please tonight to celebrate the fact that you get a clean opinion on your financial statements in accordance with GAAP. The second area that we look at, second, third, and fourth areas are all required because you receive about $2.3 million in federal awards every year, and those are surrounding a compliance audit that you have. So that requires that we look at the internal controls over your financial reporting and issue a report on it. And if there were any issues, that you had any kind of significant deficiencies in internal controls, or material weaknesses, or significant adjustments had to have been made through the course of the audit, this is where this would come out, where we'd have a conversation about that. Please tonight to present or to communicate that there are no such areas that need to be communicated, so you get a clean bill of health in that second area. The third area that we look at is your federal compliance. So you have, as I shared, you have about over $2 million in federal awards, and on an annual basis, we go in and we do a compliance audit on a rotational basis of those federal awards. This year, we looked at the IDEA program, your special education programming, and we looked at the specific compliance requirements that Uncle Sam makes sure that we... Basically tells us that we need to look at. We follow to the program that they lay out. And with regard to the compliance, we issue an opinion on that, and we opine that the school district materially complied with all the relevant compliance requirements for the IDEA program. The final area that we issue a report on has to do with the internal controls over compliance. So what are the processes and internal things that the organization does, that the school district does, to make sure that when there's changes in federal laws with regard to the IDEA program or the title programs? It's a constantly changing environment. What do you guys do to make sure that you stay on the cutting edge and that you turn around and implement the changes that are passed along from whether it be the federal government or the Department of Education? We have to evaluate those processes as part of your single audit, the IDEA audit that we went through and did this year. And again, in the fourth category, you get a clean bill of health. So in all four areas that we, you know, issue opinions and reports on, you get high grades. So congratulations to you as a board, as well as to Jen and her team from a financial management standpoint, and all the debits and credits that go along and go into processing your transactions on a daily basis. Couple comments that I would make with regard to the second document. This is called a board oversight letter. It's a required communication letter that we're required to kind of go over significant matters related to the audit with the board. It's largely a boilerplate letter. The American Institute of CPAs tells us exactly, hey, here's the areas you have to address. We put a little bit of additional things in here for your consideration. On the second page, I would point out that we kind of go down through a laundry list of the Government Accounting Standards Board statements that were implemented in the current year or are upcoming. And, you know, this matters. We've had a lot of conversations over the last couple of years about Gadsby Statement Number 68, which was, you know, where the net pension liability of the Commonwealth, or basically of the Peasars Program, you know, showed up on your financial statement and every financial statement across the Commonwealth of the school districts who share in that Peasars liability. So that was a big topic of discussion for you and every other single... Every other school board across the Commonwealth, and we've talked to all our clients about that. And so that was the one step that the Gadsby, you know, had in the last couple of years. This year was Gadsby Statement Number 75, and that was a... And I think at this point, this has to do with the other post-employment benefits that the school district would offer, either through direct funding or paying for, you know, retirement... I'm sorry, medical benefits after certain people retire, or it would have to do with subsidies that would be paid through the Peasars Program as well. So that ultimately ended up putting another $6 million of debt on the books on the school district. At this point, I believe, I think the Gadsby is done adding debt to the books of local government, because I think that's the last piece that they had to correct as they were, you know, continuing to make sure everything is covered. But that was the one significant implementation this year. You'll see a prior period adjustment that was required through the implementation of the standard that you'll see on your statement of activities, about $5, $5.5 million, I believe, that added, basically reduced your net assets. The other... So but the other Gadsbies that got implemented this year were of no consequence, truthfully. And then they gave you... We also gave you a preview here of upcoming Gadsbies that will affect your school district financial statements in the next couple of years. 2020 will be the next one, where we talk about some, maybe some enhanced presentations on, you know, student activity funds and other fiduciary funds that you may have. And then in 2021, there's another big standard coming out with regard to lease disclosures and lease measurements. Same standard is actually being implemented in the for-profit world for financial statement filers, where basically, basically, all the leases and the liabilities related to the leases are going to show up on your... On the balance sheet of local governments, as well as, you know, the Financial Accounting Standard Board and the International Accounting Standards Board is doing it for SEC companies and privately-held companies as well. So that's just kind of getting... Keeping local government in lockstep with them. The rest of the letter that's here talks about, you know, significant accounting estimates and points out a couple of significant financial statement disclosures for your review that are particularly sensitive. With the implementation of the OPEB standard this year, I think we added about 10 pages of disclosures to your financial statements. So we're up to about 80 pages in these audits. The second to last page talks about audit adjustments. We cite in here that there were no audit adjustments that had significant effect on our view on the financial reporting processes of the school district. It was very good. There were no uncorrected misstatements, so everything that, you know, when we were working through the process with Jen on any kind of adjustments, there were no... There was nothing that was posted in the following year or deferred because of materiality. We talk about the fact in here that the audit, you know, went smoothly, and we're certainly appreciative of all the cooperation that we get from administration, as well as Jen and her team. Are there any questions? A large document to go through. Jen has extra copies.
For your pleasure. Thank you so much for your team's willingness to work with us to get this completed timely, and I just want to... I know she's not here, but Mrs. Lepo did a phenomenal job coming in in April and helping out, doing the majority of the work on the financial statements this year. So I just wanted to publicly thank her, even though she is not present tonight.
Thank you.
I would venture to say that I think we, as board members, don't have a clue of how detailed and how much work goes into all this whole process, not only just in the audit process, but making sure everything is in place and done throughout the year to, you know, to keep things rolling and smooth, so that when the audit process comes, it all makes sense. But when you get a document like this, it kind of adds a little bit of credibility to all the work that you and your team and everyone involved has to go through to make something like this come out with four good recommendations tonight. So I think, you know, kudos, Jen, to you and your team, and, you know, I will tell you, knowing a little bit about what you go through and, you know, as we talk about it, it's a pretty monumental task, so.
Thank you.
Great job.
Well, in terms of the people, we work with probably, you know, close to 20 different school districts, and I think I'm doing the first presentation to the boards. So Jen, hit the finish line first.
It'll be earlier next year.
I want to echo Steve's comments, too, about our Jennifers in the business office, the wonderful job they have done with this. Again, you know, when you're talking about the kind of budget that we're working with and to have no findings whatsoever in anything is pretty phenomenal, so great work. Any other questions or comments from anybody? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Next, we have Dr. Maloney to discuss district mission, vision, and beliefs.
At the August Comprehensive Plan, Curriculum, and Professional Development Committee meeting, we collected, reviewed, and discussed several mission statements that were posted around the district. And through the discussion, we learned that there was an extensive process in 2016 to develop the posted mission statement. The process took... It stated that the process took about eight months and included students, staff, and parents. At our comprehensive planning meeting last month, we further discussed and tested the mission, vision, and our belief statement, and added the tagline, and it's the administration's recommendation that we adopt the mission, vision, belief statement, and tagline at this time. Any questions for Pat?
Could you put that back up one more time, just to review?
Sure.
Any questions for Dr. Maloney? Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have our first public comment period. This would be for items on or off of tonight's agenda. If you have anything you'd like to comment on, please come to the microphones, state your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to board president's communication. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting for some updates from our solicitor to discuss some personnel matters. We also added an item to tonight's agenda. It would be item number 827, the Z&amp;Z Farms Tax Assessment Agreement. So that is a new addition to the agenda this evening. Any questions there? Okay, we'll move on to our policy committee report with Mrs. Krum.
All right. Tonight, there are two policies up for your approval. The first one, Policy 707, Use of District Facilities. This has gone to the Facilities Committee, and they've looked at it. If you take a look at it, it is a couple of things we've added to it. Use of Dover Area School District facilities on Sunday is prohibited before 12:00 PM. The idea is to allow our custodial staff to, if they have some time with their family or if they wish to go to church on Sunday morning. We also added a cancellation fee of $50 to be charged for each event that's canceled within 50 days... Fifteen days. That specifically, sometimes people will secure the gym every Saturday for four months, and they don't... months, and they don't necessarily want it every Saturday, but they might want it, and then when they cancel last minute, somebody else can't use it. So the committee decided that they would like to put that fifty dollar cancellation fee. And also, under Appendix C, the utility charges were updated and were up a little bit. So again, that is being approved tonight. The second one, crowdfunding. This is a new Dover policy. This is in response and concern of people going out and fundraising without permission from from the district, from their administrator. So this, basically what this policy says, if if someone chooses to go out to raise funds via a social media account, then they would need permission and would have to work with the Business Department to do so. Again, this was presented at last month, last month's Human and Fiscal Committee, and again, that's also being recommended tonight. Three, four other policies that have been in discussion and that we're going to do a little more work on, nondiscrimination in employment. This needs to be updated. We're going to look at this again at the December Policy Committee meeting. Dating violence is required policy, and while we we have a policy from PSBA, we want to work a little closer with Mr. Pratt to make sure that it is what we intend it to be. We're getting close to untimely death of a student. As you can imagine, this is a a big policy with all the procedures. The Policy Committee has reviewed it. It is being reviewed Thursday night, Safe and Supportive Schools Committee, and will probably be brought to you in January. And then there are a number of policies that are recommended by the FBI as act, as part of Act forty-four. We reviewed all of those policies. However, we want to make sure that they don't, they don't go against any PSBA polys or PSE, PSBA policies. It could be similar things. They could be talking about different things, so we're just going to spend a little more more time on that. All right, any questions? We have a really long Policy Committee meeting this month.
I just had a question on the first one with the use of facilities. So is that a new policy and or a new part of the policy, charging the fifty dollars for cancellation? Is that something new? So is that something that will be pointed out to to some of the, you know, the clubs or whoever in the area renting on a regular basis?
Yes.
So they know that?
Yeah, yeah. Right. Yeah, because people already have have, yeah, have the facilities reserved.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Kroom. Okay, next up is the approval of our minutes. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen board meeting.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Banko? I feel like there should be Jeopardy music playing or something.
Mr. Rehouser, did you select your voting?
Okay, and the motion carries. Now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October eighteenth, two thousand eighteen board planning meeting.
No move.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Banko? And the motion carries. Obviously, the time change affected the speediness of the computer here. It's still slow. Next up is our consent agenda. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions on items eight oh two through eight twenty-seven?
One question for the field trip to Washington, D. C. What was the price for it last year?
It's the exact same price.
Is it? Okay.
I wanted to bring the board up to speed a little bit on a couple of the items there related to the audit. We heard earlier about the the good reported audit and the completion of that. That's on our agenda for approval to accept that report. There's a couple of things within that report that I thought it would be good for us all to kind of take note of. As is always the case, it's always a little bit of a challenge at the end of the year to figure out kind of where you're ending up. You know, it's one of the biggest challenges with with setting a budget and so on and so forth. And as you recall, this this particular audit here, two thousand seventeen eighteen, we had anticipated that we would be looking at a deficit as we did our best guess, best best estimate there. Because of a few things that we had identified last month in our report out, there was less claims in our health insurance through the Lincoln Benefits Trust that made a pretty significant impact on our bottom line at the end of the year. There was also some funding from the state, which wasn't anticipated, that came through. So I'm pleased to report that rather than a two-point-two-million-dollar deficit, we ended up with almost a net even. It was a two hundred and seventy, I forgot the exact number, two hundred and seventy-some thousand dollar surplus. So we almost hit it dead on. And so that's that's good news. I mean, it's worth worth noting for the public and for us as a board to, we didn't actually see that deficit come play to into play. And with that noted, the next item, eight twenty-one, we have a fund balance transfer that Jen is recommending to us as a board to help possibly defray some of the the additional costs from capital expenses related to perhaps the intermediate school or the high school slash middle school renovation that's coming up. So you see that there's a a million dollars slated there for a transfer to put into the Capital Projects Fund. So that's what that is about as a result of some of those good, you know, good end-of-year numbers. With that in mind, in case you hadn't already noticed, we do have a temporary Capital Projects Fund, a new one that has been set up specifically related to the high school project that is going on right now. That is a temporary Capital Projects Fund, so we have two of them currently set up. The one, as I said, is is temporary. It will progress through the rest of the the project there. In the report, if anybody's really so designated to or so interested to go find that, the numbers from both of those Capital Projects Funds are combined at the beginning. It makes that number look very inflated. But then further back in the report, it's broken out, so you can identify which is related to the new part of the 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 project. So with that in mind, I'll just say it's it's great news here at the end of the year as a result of the audit. Now we know where we where we're at, so it's better news than we had anticipated.
I've got a question for you regarding the funds that we receive from the bond issuance for the construction project. I know we don't have all those dollars going out at the same time, obviously, so how are we utilizing those funds from an investment standpoint? I mean, do we have some short-term investments taking place, and how are those returns looking?
The returns are looking good. Without having the actual statement in front of me, I can't give you the exact percentage at this point, but they are invested in what's called a full flex pool. They're invested with other monies from other school districts through our Pennsylvania School District Liquid Asset Fund. So we send them a projected draw schedule. We send Pizzla to projected draw schedule, and that is how we decide, okay, how much money are we going to invest? How much money are we going to need next week and need to pull down? So that's kind of the specifics of how we do it. We've been, you know, really starting to make, our 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 funds are more liquid at this point, just just we're we're paying a lot more bills now than in, say, July and August, so more money is available to us. We will begin in January then to look at what the next step of, or probably January or early spring, to look at the next step of what our net, our funding for the rest of the project looks like.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we have our questions and discussions. So Mrs. Banko?
Excuse me, Jen, mine's just coming up with just eight point two-one. Is that correct?
Can you click on this, the square? Not the other one, no, the black one.
This one. What? It's not going in. Now I'm back to this. Let's try this again.
And the motion carries. Next, we have our Capital Project Steering Committee. We have three change orders for approval tonight. I do believe we discussed most of these change orders at our last committee meetings, but we'll ask Mr. Nelson any questions that we might have as we go through this. So first, I would like to entertain a motion to approve change order number one for Lowbar Inc.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Mr. Nelson, did you just want to touch on this one briefly for us?
This is a first change order we've had from Matchline. Let me pull it up here.
This one's Lowbar, that we're voting on the Lowbar.
Okay, I'm sorry, Lowbar. From Lowbar, and there were two site walls that we thought we were going to have to put in, and after looking at the plans, we we decided we could sort of do without them. So we're taking those two site walls out of the out of the equation. We add them in because when you, when we started to do our plans at the beginning, you put a lot of things in you don't know if you're going to need, and then after you develop it, you don't know what county conservation is going to come back with, so that's kind of where these were.
So so you're you're, when you're saying site walls, are you talking sort of like retaining walls?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, just they were just, they weren't very high, yeah. So this is a, this is a credit for seven thousand, seven thousand one hundred dollars, one hundred twenty dollars and twenty-four cents.
We like those kinds of change orders, the credits. Any more questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, Mrs. Banko?
Hey, Jen, I don't know if this matters, but on my screen, like down at the bottom where it says motion and voting, it says motion to approve all, and it has, it has a final resolution motion carried already. So was this accidentally nine? Was that accidentally lumped in with the consent agenda?
I just changed them back, so.
Okay.
Just hit refresh on your screens if you can. Go back into the meeting. Is everyone back in? We should be okay now.
And the motion carries. Okay, next I'd like to entertain a motion to approve change order number one from Matchline Mechanical.
So move.
We have a motion and a second there. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Nelson?
This was a change order, again, this was during our initial plans that we set up. We weren't sure exactly what the code review is going to require for fire dampers and what the local fire codes official was. So after we had the plans out, then we we were told we didn't need them, they weren't required, so we're taking those out.
Another credit?
Another credit for six thousand sixty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents.
So there are no fire dampers?
No, there are. There are, yeah. This was over and above what normal.
Gotcha.
We put them in everywhere. I mean, every single, this this would have included every single major duct work.
Okay, all right, so we're, so basically we zoned everything off.
Yeah, and the and the building is, I could show you on the map, but the building is actually zoned in fire zones. This was over and above what was required.
And the motion carries. And finally, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve change order number two for York Excavating Company. We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Mr. Nelson?
This is a kind of a compilation of three different change orders. We just combined it all into one. To be quite honest with you, we were doing some horse trading here. So we had the first PCO, number three, was a, for twen- two thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, was an add. It was something that we needed to do because of, we didn't know there was a roof drain there, and we had to do something with it while we're in construction because it was a six-inch drain dumping right out on the. and we had to do something with it while we're in construction because it was a six inch drain dumping right out on the slate. So that was an add. Then the second one on this list, uh PCO number four, was a credit for ninety-five thousand dollars. And that was um, it's twenty, I'm sorry, we're in the wrong page. Um, it's about thirty-two items um that we, we looked at and thought we could probably do without them or change them slightly. So we decided to do that because we knew this number six was headed our way for seventy-five thousand. Um, so then PCO six is for seventy-five thousand was to do some erosion and sedimentation. That's what ENS stands for, uh drawing modifications. And that was uh something that uh when we, it's kind of like when you're doing your plans and you don't have all your permits in place like we did, we weren't sure what county conservation was gonna come back with. And they came back with a whole bunch of things that no one ever thought. Uh, we had to put head walls in that we've never seen before. Um, so that, that came up, we knew that was coming, we knew it was gonna be big. So we start, we started trying to offset that a little bit by what, what can we do without? That's not gonna really hurt the building, it's not gonna hurt the site, it's not gonna hurt the, you know, the lay of the land, so. Uh, it turned out then with, with all that kind of horse trading there, uh with a deduction of seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
Any other questions or discussion?
What's it, what does it look like when these change orders become necessary? What's the, just out of curiosity, what does the process look like? Is that something that uh the, our architects get involved with?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So they're, they're involved in that whole process?
Yes, yeah.
You don't have to figure that all out yourself, correct?
No, no, uh, all these change orders are, are, are we, are really, I'm involved, but they know a lot more about them than I do, so the architect's involved. Uh, we have several architectural engineering firms, we have one for mechanical electrical plumbing, we have one for site work. Um, so they're the ones that are gonna come back and say, yeah, we can do this, no, we can't do this, you know, we can do without this. That's how we, that's how we arrived at all this. So with all these change orders that we've had, the ones before you tonight, plus the one we had way back for, I forget what was, fourteen thousand dollars for the water pipe, combine all them together, we're probably, we're ahead right now somewhere in a neighborhood of about thirteen thousand dollars to the good.
Anybody else? Okay, Mrs. Benko? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Okay, next up is Dover Eagle Foundation. I do know that Mrs. Kroom and Mrs. Benko have been very busy working on this, uh talking to a lot of people about becoming potential board members uh and meeting in January to get things really launched. So I will turn this over to Mrs. Kroom to talk a little bit about this.
Yes, and Mr. Perkins has joined us too. Um, we have been talking to people, we have so far six people committed to attend the meeting and are very interested. And we have about six more that we're going to go out and talk to. Our goal on January eighth is hopefully to seat a board, elect officers, set a schedule for meetings, and approve, we have a number of teacher requests for grants and to get them approved as well. Uh, from there, we will then move on uh and, you know, talk to the Eagle Foundation to see what kind of projects they want to move forward with and especially with the building project. So, yep, January eighth, so we're hoping we have a board, which would be great.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Kroom?
Does the Eagle Foundation currently have its tax benefit?
Oh, yeah.
So if somebody wanted to donate right now to the Eagle Foundation, that is possible?
Yes, as a matter of fact, the money for the Veterans Memorial, that five thousand dollars I, which I don't know if I share with you, I was gonna share you in a little bit, somebody donated five thousand dollars to the Veterans Memorial and that is being funneled through the Dover Eagle Foundation. So yes, they can do that now. We have accounts, we have our tax code number, mm-hmm.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, next up is York Adams Academy, Ms. Remig.
Uh, at our last meeting, we are discussing the general fund budget. And our next meeting will be on November twenty-seventh. And winter graduation will be on Tuesday, December the eleventh. And currently, we have ten open seats available at York Adams Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Remig, any questions from him? Okay, next up, Mr. Delauter, York County School of Technology.
I have uh two things to report on. First is again, um similar to the York Adams Academy, it's budget time uh for the school technology. Um, we were presented with the preliminary budget. Um, it was also given to the area superintendents. Uh, and to my understanding, there were no uh issues, concerns uh through the superintendent, with the superintendents. The budget will be increasing at two point one percent. Uh, the, in a large majority are those uh the increases in contractual obligations for salaries. Uh, there were two additions to the um, to the, two additional expenditures uh in the budget and that is for an additional bus. If you remember last year, I talked about how uh one of the buses um serving the southern end of the county has like an hour and a half um bus ride. Uh, they've added another bus there to try and cut that down under an hour. So we have, now have two on there. And um they now have brought back a music program uh to the school which had been gone for uh seven or eight years. So we were able, they were able to find some money uh in the budget uh to bring that back. Um, that's gonna come back to us um next week, as a matter of fact, and we will be voting on that. And then after that, it will come out to us uh for final approval on that. Uh, second item is the, their building project. Um, it, it's moving forward. Uh, the architects had uh come to our last meet, our authority meeting and presented their latest proposal, which was a more, uh if you remember, ours was a more in-depth um look at, at the gym proposal. We're, we're narrowing down on the price. Uh, there are several of us that still have some concerns over the, the price tag. Uh, it's now coming in about ten point eight million dollars. Um, which puts us about, if you remember, we, we took out a twelve million dollar bond. Uh, it puts us uh several hundred thousand still over that twelve million. Uh, so some of us are still concerned with trying to get that down and the arch, and the architect was directed to see where we can, again, come up with uh those savings um to keep it under that so we don't have to come back to the school districts uh for additional monies, which uh I don't think would be very popular uh to do. I think that's it.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Delauter? Okay, if not, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Delauter as the authority member for the York County School of Technology. For a term beginning January first, twenty nineteen. It's only a five-year term, so.
So move.
Thanks, Mr. Remig.
You're quite welcome.
We have a motion in a second, any other questions or discussion other than for Mr. Delauter? That's okay, Chuck.
Mr. Delauter, I'll still be your alternate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Benko. And the motion carries. Okay, next up, LIU Special Education, Mr. DeChau.
Uh, yes, last month, we held our interviews for the director of the LIU. We have uh made a selection, they are in negotiations for contracts with that individual. And the uh board seats will be coming up for a vote uh to the school districts here within, I think, the next month or so. And that's it.
Okay, questions for Mr. DeChau? Okay, Mr. Rahauer, Legislative and York Learning Center.
Okay, well, everybody knows we're gonna have the same governor for the next four years, so we'll see how he makes out with education. And the meeting was tonight and they knew I couldn't attend. So I guess I can report in two months for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rahauer, any questions for him? Okay, Mrs. Brenton, PSBA.
Um, not really much going on there either. As Mr. Rahauer noted, uh Governor Wolf has been re-elected and um we're, the PSBA is helping, hoping that um this victory will help to uh ensure the continuation of uh investing more money into public education. So that's the, that's all I've got there.
Okay, questions for Mrs. Brenton? Okay, Mrs. Herman, Dover Industrial Development Committee.
Uh, nothing to report other than that tomorrow is the next, the second breakfast of the um Business Association, which was just started. So we have two members attending or at least one, so that's everything.
Thank you, any questions for Mrs. Herman? Okay, Mrs. Kroom, Superintendent's Report.
Well, happy American Education Week to everybody. And in front of you is a small token of our appreciation uh for all your support and all the work you do for us every year. Um, I think what's important about American Education Week is it celebrates public education. And, you know, that's something that's near and dear to all our heart and we work very hard for it. So, thank you for, thank you very much. Uh, the APL strategy presentation that the kids did was amazing. What I wanna make sure everyone understands is those strategies that those kids demonstrated for you are strategies being taught in every single classroom, K to twelve. And they look different in every single classroom, but we rolled this out last spring when we had those two professional development days. And we have really worked with teachers and buildings to really structure their classes so students are engaged. And what I loved about that was how the kids explained it, it was great. Um, so that was very exciting, so I just wanted to make sure you understood that. And you, we have art on the wall, new art on the wall this month from the high school students, it's beautiful. So take a minute to take a look at it before you leave tonight. We had our first Unity Council uh meeting on October twenty-ninth. Approximately fifteen people came, parents, students, teachers, administrators, I think that's kind of the group. Uh, it was a great meeting. Uh, Kirsten did a wonderful job sharing with them what we do in our buildings to include people. All, from, from our discipline to our responsive classroom, to PBIS, to the things at the high school and the IS. It was wonderful. And I think everyone was, was, was very pleased with the things we put in place, especially this year. Um, we also talked about we are going to be doing a diversity survey with the entire staff and the entire student body in the month of December. So we're going to do that, uh like, for example, K one questions say, um, do I, are there people in my school that look like me? Um, do we celebrate my holidays? And the high school students, they, they were a little insulted by the questions. They thought they were like too low level, so their questions are going to look a lot like the teachers' questions. So those get into a little bit more about have you ever felt bullied uh because of your religion, those kinds of things. So we're going to collect this information and we're gonna bring it back to the Unity Council. And our goal is to take a look at this information and set some goals for this year and then into the future as to what we want to do with this information. So it was a great night and, and kudos to Kirsten, she, as always, did a wonderful job with her presentation.
Tracy, when's the next meeting?
The next meeting is on January twenty-second, which is a Tuesday evening, I think, yes, yes, it's a Tuesday evening. Uh, Veterans Memorial Committee, uh, that has really taken on a life of its own because of Brad Jacobs. Brad Jacobs is amazing and he, they have done a great job, he has raised five thousand dollars already. It kinda got out the door before we really advertised it, but that's okay because it's getting a lot of press. I don't know if you noticed, it got a lot of press this week, uh interviewing some of our teachers that are veterans. Uh, but so it's a great story and we're excited. As soon as the, the Eagle Foundation kind of gets up and running, they'll have a hand in that as well. But uh Mr. Jacobs has just done a great job of himself. He, he actually, there was a Veterans Breakfast this week, Brad, how many people attended?
Eleven hundred.
Attended a Veterans Breakfast at the Fairgrounds?
Yeah.
Fairgrounds, he was there, of course, Mr. Jacobs was there, and shared a lot of information about it. So I think we're gonna see some really neat things come of that. Just a reminder, holiday concerts are right around the corner. We're doing something a little different this year in that we're combining two elementary schools together. And all concerts are going to be at the high school in, for winter concerts. And the purpose of that is for, you know, we heard, we heard things like there wasn't enough parking at the buildings, you couldn't see the kids, so this will be our pilot, we'll see how this goes. Uh, even the intermediate school concert is also at the high school because of parking. So, um, but that's very exciting, so that is coming up. And Chuck, I would like him to come forward, there was a question about the uh high school course of studies. And one of the questions talked about what exactly is Project Lead the Way? And Chuck is the best person to explain what Project Lead the Way is.
Project Lead the Way is right now the number one STEM education program in the country. We actually have two of the three legs, uh Project Lead the Way. One is engineering and one is, is our computer science. They are foundational courses for both the computer technology and our engineering program. Our computer science um program of Project Lead the Way allows our students to complete the two courses and sit for the AP Computer Science um test. Uh, and there's actually five courses in engineering that we are, that we have of Project Lead the Way. So the only leg that we do not have currently of the three that's offered for the high school is biotechnology. Is there any other questions that you have?
So, so, so we have two of the three legs?
Correct.
Um, are we looking at adding, possibly adding that third leg down the road at all?
Yeah, we're always looking uh to see what's best for our students at this point. Um, with everything that we're offering, I'm not sure where we would find the space for it.
So, um, so, so with those two legs and, and our enrollment in those classes, do we seem to have um a, a, a large amount of students, or a good amount of students participating?
Yes, we do.
In these programs?
Yes. Actually, right now, we have in our, um, now, the Project Lead the Way is only probably about a third of the computer technology. We also use CompTIA and Cisco as the, as the other two-thirds of that full program. Um, but that, those are our foundational courses. And we have roughly, in the computer tech, we have roughly around a hundred and nineteen, hundred and twenty-five kids taking those courses this year. Not all of them are in the program, um, but a lot of them come in and take uh three or four of the classes. Just not all nine needed to complete the program.
Now, now the classes, the, the curriculum, is that a um, like a national curriculum?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and the other thing about uh Project Lead the Way, it leads to end of course assessments that are standardized across the country, then we can compare. Uh, it also is the only STEM career and tech program that is recognized by an international baccalaureate degree. So it has pretty high academic standards tied to it. Anything else?
Thank you, Chuck. And finally, our fall play is this Friday and Saturday. And I think what's so exciting about this particular play, it's called Searching for David's Heart. And it, it is right in line with our social emotional learning and what we're doing with the kids and what we're doing with the staff this year. Uh, it's the story of a, a boy who's a heart donor and is in, is killed in an accident. It's the story of his sister and her friend going off to find uh who, who received the heart. So very excited about this particular play, um, and I think it was a great choice for this year. And that is all I have for now.
Any questions for Mrs. Kroom? Okay, we'll move on to our miscellaneous period for any other comments or observations from our board members.
Yes, I have a couple. Uh, I've been asked, uh, how many of our schools are paid for?
What's the question, Mr. Rahauer?
How many of our school buildings, you know, we have paid for, are we all, are they all in the debt?
Um, I would have to get back to you on that answer to be, to make sure I was correct. Um, I mean, we have, you know, when you go out for bond for, for different projects, um, you know, they end up then getting refunded. Um, and I think I have done a presentation on those fundings in the past. So I'll pull that presentation up and we can review it that way.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, at the uh Loan Note Banquet, uh, I said about to people, and that was a comment I made before already, and I'll make it again, our communications needs to improve with our senior citizens group because people claim they never got that fly- Our communications needs to improve with our senior citizens group because people claim they never got that flyer. It would've made any difference about the progress of the project going, but they didn't get the flyers. Now, whether a letter would've got there better than a flyer, I don't know. If the mailman don't deliver flyers, or how that works.
We are going to put out our first district newsletter in January. So hopefully, that is going to go a long way. Our goal is to put out three a year in the fall, winter, and spring. So it's going to be information for taxpayers, specifically what they might be interested in by the end of January. So hopefully, that is one step. We've been advertising a lot in the township newsletter, you know, the different meetings and things we've had. I've had my first superintendent coffee conversation meeting that people are welcome. It wasn't well-attended, but I think that'll get better. So we've been trying hard to get out a lot of different ways. Do they have any recommendations, any suggestions as to how to get information out?
By the way, I know it'd be a letter because lots of people don't get the papers.
Right. I think the newsletter's gonna be big.
And the computers and iPads for the senior citizens, they're not one bit concerned about learning that technology.
Right.
If you could, if you're hearing that people aren't receiving our stuff that we're mailing, if they could actually reach out to me via phone or however they need to reach out to me to give me their name, I can check them against the list we use. We use our tax...our tax addresses where we send our tax bills, and I only received one of those flyers back. So if they're not getting them, I'm not sure why, but I would love to hear from them so I can make sure their address is correct in our system.
Another comment is, I told someone that we're complaining. I said, "Come February, there's papers in York. You can get one, fill it out. There's five openings on the board this year." And that right away gives a different tune to their thinking. The other thing is that the president said I should announce it was that there's a...I have some flyers here for a fundraiser logistics tomorrow for the Dover Alumni Association, and he feels that more board members ought to pay their $5 and join the Dover Alumni Association. That was his words.
Now, I will share with you that Mr. Fenstermacher has been working very closely with our friend Brad back there. They spend a lot of time together. He has updated the webs...their piece of our website and is putting everything that they give us on there. Yep, and I know that I've been working closely with Mr. Fenstermacher. We wanna get him in the high school closer to graduation. We want...I wanna allow him to address the graduates because I think that's something they should consider doing as well as they graduate. So, yeah, we've been working pretty closely with the Alumni Association.
And then he just said about he felt that some more of the board members ought to join. And that's all I have.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have just one thing. I wanna send out some kudos. She's received, like, I think, oodles, but she doesn't do enough. Jane Arnold, I think is the custodian at the high school. What an amazing lady. The Music Boozers had our craft show this weekend, and it was nuts. More people I've ever seen there. And every time we went to her to ask for something else, and sometimes we had her going two and three different ways, she never, never lost her smile. It's just...she's just upbeat, and it's just an amazing, amazing lady. So again, I wanna give, you know, kudos for her. Just when she leaves, I'm not gonna vote for her to leave, but I'm not gonna... But that's gonna be some huge, huge shoes to fill. So I just wanted to put that out there.
You took the words out of my mouth. I was actually gonna commend our custodial staff here in American Education Week. I think a lot of times they are the unsung heroes of our system and don't get the recognition that they deserve for their efforts. They're there day in, day out, all different hours. Jane, it was funny at the end of the night when everybody's working at cleaning up. She's over there vacuuming some rugs, and I told her, "You have been on your feet all day long. I want you to go sit in that chair over there." And I said, "And this is the board president telling you this. Go sit." And I'm taking the vacuum. I turn around. She's got a broom going all over the place. She cannot sit. She cannot take a break. So kudos to everybody across the district there from our custodial staff. They're all wonderful and do great work for us. And it was, I mean, we had well over 2,000 people come through the building on Saturday, and at the end of the night, you'd have never known it. And she did that, and Sean Friday night during the setup period as well. It was great too. So anybody else?
Yeah, just to chime in on that one. So Mr. Harold, who's the custodian at Weigeltown, he...the day I was in working the library, he was going around collecting money for the big lottery prize, you know? And he said, "I guess there's not gonna be anybody coming in here more." And I said, "Mr. Harold, the kids need you." I was at the grocery store talking to him one day. Two kids came right up to him to talk to him. So, yeah, he would be so missed by them. They love him.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. This will be our last public comment period, two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. Anybody? Okay, with that, we'll move on to our future meeting announcements. Our next meeting is December 4th, 2018, at 7:00 PM here for our board reorganization. If there is no further business tonight, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
We have a meeting Thursday?
We do have committee meetings Thursday. They are not listed here in front of me. So Thursday, are all committees beginning at 6:00?
All committees, but comprehensive plan, that's 5:00.
5:00. Okay, comprehensive plan at 5:00.
4:45 if you want dinner, but you can eat during the meeting, and you gotta eat because there's a lot of food.
Okay. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
We're adjourned.